Uh. A uh, an amendment has been proposed by Etta in regards to the adoption policy, which I agree with. Um, as it stands now, no one has actually filed for uh, to be registered. Uh, and that could be because it is a inexpensive fee and it will remain expensive. Uh, we are, we're going to drop it by five thousand dollars to twenty five thousand. Or this is what I'm suggesting. We uh, we amended uh, as uh, from thirty K to twenty five K. Um, and there's a couple of logistic errors that I made in writing it, namely uh, with the enactment of the marriage act. Um, we, the state has fight or again defined what it means to be married in Los Santos. Which means we can use the marriage act uh, to uh, uh, to tied in with the adoption policy. Essentially what I'm going to say is um, if two people say like Siobhan and I were married. If we were to adopt someone, that would be our in quotes adopted person, right? Uh, because we are legally recognized by the state as being married. Uh, so the amendment I propose, propose is essentially to permit that. Um, and also to raise the cap of adopted people from one to two. Uh, with the second one costing uh, seventy five thousand. Uh, any suggestions uh, about the fee, about the uh, anything I just said?
Holy shit.
I'm indifferent.
Affirmative?
Yep, we already worked that out over the phone, so I'm in agreement.
Oh, alright.
Uh, yeah, then no arguments here.
Cool.
Marriage.
Um, I will.
Ultimate, you're speaking, I can't hear you.
Fathers in, in adoption?
Yeah.
We want to talk to about it, but there has been uh, a bit of a cryo over the law. But I.
Which law?
The uh.
The adoption policy, yeah.
Have you guys had people come to you?
I have had so many texts, but it's all from one person, so I'll be honest, I haven't heard too much.
Uh, no one's come to me.
I've uh, no, no one's come to me directly either, but it's more uh, I'll, I'll classify it as water cooler talk. Uh, to be clear, I still think the law is good. I think we should all affirm on it. Uh, the types of complaints I've been hearing around the water cooler. Uh, it's just reaffirming why this law needed to be in place to begin with, if I can be honest.
I, I would agree. Uh, I, I'm still for um, a higher cap and just letting people pay for as many people as they want, but I will vote with you. I think that's reasonable.
We can go up to uh, three for now.
Um, yeah, I'd say three is a good number.
Why don't we just do, why don't we do three and just escalate it by the same cost each time? So twenty five, fifty, seventy five.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, I was, I was, I was gonna say adult law.
Fifty, seventy five?
Twenty, twenty five, fifty, hundred.
Yeah, is no uh, Crane said just now?
No, I said twenty five, fifty, seventy five. Add twenty five each time.
Yeah, that's what, that's what uh.
No, he said twenty five, fifty, a hundred.
Double each time.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Uh, it's late. Um, okay.
Oh, you're good. I think.
Yeah, I got a quick uh, inner sick. You all play your phone. Anybody have somebody in their phone that ends in two nine eight eight?
No.
Nope, my phone was stolen. Um.
Okay.
Yep, I don't have one.
That's also not in our hospital roster, so I don't know.
Are we even able to search by number? Does that work?
No, I had to go through manually.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
He said two nine eight eight, uh. I don't have that many at least. It's not in our hospital roster though, so that narrative down.
You said two nine eight eight?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, I actually do. Uh, Mr. Kay?
Four, two, zero, zero, three, seven, two, nine, eighty.
Mr. Kay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that adds up.
Yep.
What happened?
Uh, he texted me in all caps, go fuck yourself.
Okay, yikes. It's not how he gets things done. Oh, boy.
I think he's not happy about me uh, getting information out of him surreptitiously. Anyway.
Funny enough, uh, that's when he gave me the phone number, is when he told me that information about when he knew about the law.
Oh, well.
Oh, Mr. Kay.
So uh, it sounds like we're on the agreement about the ad- adoption amendments.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
Nice, quick, easy, couple of minutes discussed. Um.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, you want me to do that right now?
Uh, I'm gonna write it out in the original document in the reports and then I'll put it at the bottom.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
The amendment will show that we're at least willing to listen, so.
Absolutely.
The vocal.
Yeah.
You know.
And I caught uh. Yeah, I caught uh, speaking of willing to listen, I caught a little bit of what um, Mr. Simone here was saying about something about pay. Uh.
It's fucking cold tonight.
I ain't willing to listen. Uh, I'm, I'm.
You don't remember the doctor stuff?
Yeah, I uh, so I'm, I'm gonna regale you with tales of old real quick. I don't know what's my shtick here.
With the, with the understanding that we don't live in the past.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'm just simply speaking about human nature and giving anecdotes to support my uh, explanation.
Turning on my.
So uh, I am firmly of the belief that uh, much like many uh, nation states throughout history, appeasement is not a good policy. Uh, I think that we travel down a slippery slope whereby uh, we need to understand the actual motivation and desires of people, not what they tell us. So my point is, is as an example, uh, I as a judge uh, in the DOJ uh, before the restructuring, that was a very similar problem. At that time, I will uh, recall that doctors were being paid approximately five thousand dollars an hour. EMS were making four thousand dollars an hour. Uh, everyone in the city criminal or otherwise was driving around in sports cars and all that. Uh, and some of the judges and lawyers essentially felt that they were uh, being left behind in terms of their compensation. And as such, we established a policy whereby we compensated uh, people for doing their job on an iterative basis. So if a judge completed a bench trial or a docket case, they got a certain amount of money. I think in that economy, it was like thirty thousand for a docket case, sixty at one point actually. Bench trials were like fifteen, lawyers additionally got those kind of bonuses. Uh, and my uh, I won't call it a suspicion. My uh, conclusion that I'm trying to convey to you is that I don't believe that uh, appeasing people by slowly incrementally raising their pay will ever be uh, a conclusion that will leave anyone satisfied. Essentially uh, people will always look at their neighbors, talk about keeping up with the Joneses and decide that someone somewhere is making more money than them. And they should always be basically equal and they should always make the same money. Uh, I'm not convinced that's a good conclusion. Uh, and I think that it is a precedent that I would not like to set because essentially my belief is that uh, it will never stop. So that's just my commentary.
I agree that everyone wants to get paid more, but the reality is uh, you trying to survive on uh, let's, let's just call it government sector base pay uh, without any auxiliary income uh, is, is extremely tough, if not impossible.
It is.
Define, define survival.
Do you wanna go for a moment?
Yeah, sure. Uh.
I never had a complaint about my pay on VLA.
Definition for, for poverty.
Everybody else did.
Consider it below a poverty line. Like obviously we, we have free healthcare, you know, the, the, the government workers are, are not going to waste away on, on the side of the road with, with malnutrition. Uh, they, they will have their, their basic needs met. Uh, but uh, they, they will probably.
Pay's always been fine, but they see people get supercar and they're like, I want super car.
In, in, in time, if they scrounge and save, uh, fuck ever getting a house.
I had a car. It costs like thirty grand. That's all I fucking needed, dude.
You know, I, I think given the economics of our city, not everyone can own a house.
Driving around a shitty little Honda thing.
However, I don't think that.
Don't they get paid similar to you as a clerk? They should be chilling. Yeah, but they don't want to work as often. That car was a boat. That car was amazing.
Right, like I, I would at least.
That car did not drive like a boat. The Segoy?
So are you insinuating that currently uh, at a, at a government salary, it is impossible to save enough for a car or a house?
That's how I drove it.
To be honest, I, I would say yes.
Hey, Gomer.
The only person I know who's been able to get a nice car um, within the hospital is Pixie. Uh, and one I know she was loaned thirty K as well as given a lot of other cash bonuses from people. She's got a lot of friends. Uh, she's also worked almost every single day, all day. She is the only one I know.
Right, but okay, but sorry, I just, I gotta say, you use the phrase nice car. I was about to say the same thing. So again, you're kind of proving what I said, which is.
My doctors that have.
It's about keeping up with, well, right, but is that because?
She works.
Is that because they can't afford any car or is it because they only want the nice sports car that they see other people driving?
Because I'm pretty sure that the, the car that Pixie bought is one of the ones that we touched drove, Michael.
Cause I, I saw someone advertising on the, on Twitter.
Pixie work, Pixie has worked day in, day out, every single day since this hospital. Oh, like that, that is the level there, you know, like a.
And I literally just put a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars into a home.
I don't care about having anything nice. I'm just saying that that is the bar if, for it to ever even be possible for anyone.
Yeah, I guess.
Whereas there are people that work one weekend and they have enough from something like group six, you know?
Yeah, well, okay, so that, that's, that's the thing we also need to.
It's anecdotal too, because.
Yeah.
I feel like.
Crippling everything.
Yeah, I know, it's a topic.
Well, but hold on, hold on. I, I don't want to deal with anecdotes. I want to deal with facts.
Yeah, so.
Okay, cause there's a lot of gossip.
Here, here's how it is from the doctor's standpoint, right?
Sure.
Um, don't get me wrong, I will uh, I'll shut down anyone who tries to form a union and cry about it forever. Um, however, I will say that from my standpoint, I do think that at the end of the day, the only thing that we want to ask for as doctors is to keep the hospital staffed. Uh, and that is an issue. Um, I know we have a lot of doctors on staff, uh, but that is because currently staffing is still an issue. Even with uh, we've hit over a hundred and ten doctors on staff and we still have numerous points in a day where we are down to no, if not maybe one or two doctors on staff. Um, they just do not work because they're not incentivized to. Um, and some of them are amazing doctors who, who want to be there. I've had people come to me uh, and say that, you know, they just, they just can't make it work. Um, and I just, I, I don't want anything crazy. Don't get me wrong. I'm not looking to have it constantly.
I make less than them.
I just want to encourage the people who actually are contributing to work. Because at the end of the day, as a doctor, the only people who are getting paid, the only people who are getting paid, whatever amount we give, are the people who are actually contributing. We have blitz, you cannot sign on and clock off.
What, what would do that? I guess is my, what I'm trying to understand because right now, for example, uh, a council member uh, depending on their role, makes between like seven and nine hundred dollars an hour.
Uh, we make uh, six hundred before tax, as far as I'm aware.
So, so if, so if you, so if you were to make eight hundred before tax, your, your taxes, what? Just pulling up the state, it was rhetorical. Uh, personal income sixteen percent.
Yeah.
So if you get a two hundred dollar an hour bump, uh, that two hundred is cut down by twenty, uh, we'll call it, you know, roughly something like thirty five dollars, thirty dollars. So you're making about a hundred and sixty more an hour. Uh, your original net was six hundred, so call that five thirty five. So you go from making five thirty five to making, you know, let's call it seven hundred net.
To be honest, to me, that would be an amazing change. Uh, I know like Max pitched like um, twelve hundred an hour. Th- that's not what I'm asking for. To me, that is huge because at the end of the day, the only people that that pay increased benefits are the people who are actually contributing. There is no option for someone to sign on as a doctor and not be actively available at all times. Uh, if they do, they will be fired.
So I guess it, like if we extend that out, right? Give me a second, I'm gonna do some math. So let's say uh, someone who works, we'll call it full time, is we'll call it forty hours a week.
Right.
And for this city, people usually don't take days off, so we'll, we'll call it seven days a week and eight hours a day is fifty six.
I have all our hours if you want a general idea of what people are doing.
So if you, if you work.
People work that much.
So I write, so I'm saying if you work full time, fifty six hours a week, we'll call it. And you're making what you're currently making right now, which is six hundred hours pre-tax, you make five thirty five an hour. That's about thirty thousand dollars.
Our highest hours that anyone has worked this month so far is fifty five.
Right, so, so what I'm saying is that if you make, if you were to make seven hundred an hour net, which is the eight hundred an hour growth, which is a two hundred dollar an hour bump. You're gonna go from thirty thousand dollars a month for somebody who's working fifty six hours a month, or a week, sorry, to thirty nine. And I guess what I'm trying to point at is that in terms of the gap of cost between, let's say, a low cost affordable automobile versus a nice one, that does not seem to me to jump that gap. Because I can buy a car for twenty thousand dollars, right? I saw some advertising a club with a turbo second hand for twenty grand. I, I, I admittedly do not clog as many hours as most people and I could, I could buy that car, right? And I guess, and what I'm trying to understand is if the desire and the complaint is that the money currently being offered does not incentivize people to work at the hospital. Does ten thousand dollars extra a week create people that are going to abandon those other opportunities to come work at the hospital?
To be honest, yes. When we heard that uh.
If it doesn't work, we can just drop it again.
I, I mean, yeah, when we heard that seventy five dollar increase, um, a lot of people were extremely happy with that. Like uh, it, it's not much, but it's just the acknowledgement that people are, they're pretty much trapping themselves in one place where they just have to wait for people to come to them to be available for any time when someone is injured, anytime when someone's hurt. We have, we see every single person in the city, whether they're walking in, self transport, EMS bring them in, you know? It, it's, it's rough sometimes, I'm not gonna lie. And we have people that are putting in a hell of a lot of hours and I just think that they deserve a little bit more uh, little bit more to acknowledge what they do.
With, with respect to the, the staffing issue as well, uh, e- even if we assume that the income people currently are making is, let's say sufficient for.
I mean, if doctors just.
You know, how, houses be damned, right? Uh, I, I believe there's also still a, a time factor to consider, you know, respectfully, you know, to the doctors who are, who are having staffing issues.
God.
If someone could make in six hours, what would take them eight hours to make, I, I don't think we should be shackling people to their place of work. And that's also something that uplifting some of these base level jobs, doctors and lawyers primarily, can help accomplish. Uh, lawyers are, are the least paid in, in the government as far as I know. Now granted, they, they have a lot of additional freedoms that doctors don't have, but it, it is a bit of a morale thing and I think it is a good message to say like, hey, you don't have to be working for the government uh, a hundred percent of the time you're in the city, just to feel like you could get out there and do something else.
It's a double edged sword though, because h- how many people did you say that you guys have hired now?
Hello? We have a hundred and ten people hired and still struggle to staff the hospital.
Yeah, but why are you struggling to staff the hospital? Because people are going off doing.
Getting paid.
Because a hundred and ten of those people did it because they wanted the money, not because they're a medical professional or care about people. And a second, they didn't see the money, they walked off.
Okay, I, I have an issue with that. I have an actual issue with that because people who spread that narrative are not thinking about the fact that sure, if someone might have gotten hired because they wanted to see if the pay was good, that is unfortunate. That means that they are someone who should not stick around. But the thing is, that means that they are someone that will not. We currently have an inactivity list. Anyone who did not complete their hours for last month is flagged as inactive. If they do not complete their hours for this month, they are fired. Anyone who is not contributing, if they found out that it doesn't pay enough, then they're just gonna be gone. Um, the only people who are working who would benefit from this are the people who are actually contributing. I'm sorry. Because the people that are getting money are working. And if they're fucking around with that, then they're just gonna get fired.
There, there's a, there's a general sentiment, sentiment right now that uh, I think there's, there's the, the elephant in the room that we are not addressing is that uh, uh, okay, group six.
Okay, we're gonna do this now.
Hmm.
Okay, we need to move, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is fucking annoying.
I can't hear anything.
I can't hear anything.
I, I, I couldn't and now that's all I can hear, yeah.
Alright, let's go, let's go to my office, everyone. Let's go to my office, fuck it.
Who, who's yelling?
Uh, Jerome, Harry Jackson. Yeah.
We can do uh, Juno's office, actually, it's a little bit bigger.
I couldn't hear anything.
I can't hear anything.
Max said something and then I could hear it all of a sudden.
Yeah, all like, that's all I can hear.
He was really yelling there for a second.
Well, I wanna see if I can still hear them when the door closes.
Okay.
Field trip.
Field trip.
Guess this is where I would normally be sitting here.
Yeah, I guess so. We kind of rebuilt.
Why don't we all sit in a circle or some shit?
Sure.
Hmm.
I got bad knees, I'm not sitting on the ground.
It's all good.
Fair enough.
Um.
Okay, cozy here.
Group six.
Fuck that job.
Group, group six. Okay, so people are inherently motivated by money. That's just the way that it is. And when they see their friends or their, their people uh, you know, driving nice cars or they've got super fancy houses, they're like, what do you do? Oh, I do group six. You know what I'm saying? Um, the, we are, it, it is a huge staffing crisis right now. Mechanics, doctors, uh, even the only fast food place in Los Santos right now cannot staff enough people to keep it like fully functioning. So we have, we have two, we, we basically have two roads, okay? We petition the group six, uh, have their influence be lowered. Or we raise everyone else up to match. That's what we, that's what we have to do.
In, input?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I know we keep using G six S, that's the, you know, the one that pays out the most and it's the biggest issue.
Mm-hmm.
But it's because it's accessible, it seems, because grime pays out the same amount, if not better. If you have been a, if, yeah, if you've been around.
Yeah, but both of them, then both of them are a problem for them. I don't know. Shouldn't a doctor be better paid than a delivery driver?
Yes, there's an elephant, well.
I, I disagree with those arguments.
I'll be honest, I also disagree.
We're on, we're on a, a border here and I'm, I'm gonna keep this as reasonable as I can. But there's an element that we're not discussing and the elephant in the room is, is that if someone, you know, fights their way through the train into the city and chooses to spend eight hours doing group six, that's their own fucking prerogative. But i- if you are in lucky and entitled enough to be able to come into the city whenever you want as a doctor or lawyer or cop or whatever, you know, then maybe uh, your life's goal shouldn't be to keep up with the guy's grinding group six. And maybe that priority is uh, well, wrongly placed.
I, I don't disagree with that, to be honest. I'm not trying to have our pay be competitive with group six or anything. Um, I, I just want a, a bump to acknowledge the effort they're putting in essentially. It's, I'm very much looking for something different than trying to match that. If that's what they're there for, then at the end of the day, it is, it is the wrong reason. I just want it to be not as punishing, I guess, to choose that over group six.
I, yeah, I think group six is a problem. I think it is like the boogeyman when it comes to the.
But, but hold on, but sorry, I, I gotta harp on this. That, that's not a choice that everyone has. There's a false equivalency here.
Hey, uh, let's, we, we're gonna do.
What do you mean?
I'm saying if a doctor comes into the city and works fifty six hours a week, working as a doctor, they have the ability to do that whenever they want. There are plenty of people that cannot come into the city and work fifty six hours a week doing group six.
But there are plenty of people who can. Plenty of people have the opportunity to, to waltz in and they have, and they have accumulated a lot of wealth as a result of working these jobs. Instead of working jobs that they would normally otherwise be working.
I'll be out, the, the issue is more so with doctors, right? Like um, that is, the issue is people just don't come because it's more worth it for them to sit on the train and wait so that they can show up and do group six. They, they don't come and work for us.
The, the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is people are abandoning essential jobs to work those jobs.
They are, yeah.
That, that is what's happening. I've seen it. These guys have seen it.
Yeah, and I'm saying I don't think raising pay is gonna change that.
Well, what do we, what do we do?
Hmm.
What do, what do we do?
That's a great fucking question.
I, I feel like, yeah.
Disagree that raising pay.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't understand that.
It may help bring.
Yeah.
Two people in the door. It's not the end all be all.
Yeah, I mean, that shit leaves the nerve.
Like uh, we, we, we had a saying in PD about slapping a, a fucking Band-Aid on, on a bullet wound. Uh, I, I do think that we are approaching a, a fucking bullet wound with this group six economy and, and the grime economy. But I, I would rather apply the, a Band-Aid, which is a little bit of a base increase pay. You know, give them that little bit of dopamine hit, give them a bit of a more uh, increase.
That's really what I'm looking for, yeah.
Yeah.
While we continue to talk about.
Yeah.
The economy is gonna be reset and balanced.
Sorry, this is just the way it is. That, that's not gonna.
Okay, I will be clear. I have no issue with doing so as long as we all understand that we're doing so. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with patting, you know, fucking little Timmy on the head and saying it's all gonna be okay, as long as we all understand that that's what we're doing.
Let's uh, Crane, give everyone gun licenses, we'll go fucking.
Hell, yeah.
Let's go get G six out of the city, bro.
Let's do it.
Let's go shoot them up.
A two dollar increase is gonna like solve this fucking problem, Crane, but we, we gotta start somewhere and we gotta at least show these people that we.
Well, okay, but I, I, okay, I, I am fine with doing that.
Right.
Uh, I will just tell you, I will just tell you that uh, it is not my uh, viewpoint that starting somewhere is going to continue. Because I, I don't want to get, cause I'm gonna be honest with you, we had problems staffing doctors at five thousand dollars a fucking hour. It's just the reality.
Could that have been an issue with the way that they were hired before?
It's because it was very boring back in the day, but uh, we uh, we're making.
I mean, lawyers are the same thing. It has always been the same, I mean, hell.
And that's, that's gonna be the other problem too, is that if we bump one, everybody else is going, because everybody talks and that means that everybody else is gonna start bitching and moaning about wanting a bump as well, so.
I, I, that's the other thing. We'll, we'll talk about all of this, like uh, like I said, I'm really not trying to get specifically Dr. Pay to be anything crazy. I just.
We hear you, we hear you. Please don't, please don't think that we don't hear you. It's just that.
Appreciate you.
You know, i- it's not, it's not that we're saying, you know, no, they don't deserve it. It's just that if we open this floodgate, then everybody is going, it's going to, you know, a couple of months, you know, down the road or whatnot, you know, then it's gonna be the same thing. And then they're gonna want another bump. And you know, of course, the other professions will want above this one.
That's a problem. I'm shit, man, that.
Okay, well, that was just me spitballing, you know?
Yeah, sign me up for that. Uh, but no, I, I think a good message, especially if we're worried about the, the optics of all this, uh, I, I, I may be pulling out an inaccurate number, uh, Nicole or, or the church, you could correct me. I, but I believe the PD are, are making.
I think the best way to go about this system is like a rolling pay scale.
Ultimately speak for the doctors or the other factions, but I think it's a great message if we say that in a lot of these government positions, hey, we're all in it together. Uh, cops, doctors, lawyers, uh, we're, we're, we're all making the same baseline pay and you know, if, if that's just seven hundred, because cops are gonna be the biggest hit on the budget if we increase them. I, I think that's the, the fine point.
Like diminishing returns, like. People who actually work their job would get paid better.
Yeah, the, it, it, the only thing else.
For like those systems.
Also kind of banging on the.
We incentivize them to like work.
After the last week of uh, being out there policing, it, it might not be as.
And if they're not working, it goes down.
Appetizing to some people as it was a week ago, if I could say that kindly. Have you all been like hammering them hard? There, people are getting robbed every five seconds that are doing group six now.
But yeah, they're literally.
Is it bad if I say good?
Well, okay, well, I mean, people being violently robbed over and over and over.
I feel, yeah, that's a.
So I don't know what kind of actual financial toll that takes on the people who are doing that. I don't know what other ramifications it could have for those people doing it, but it is absolutely uh, it's happening at an extremely high rate right now. And I'm not saying that as far as like, I don't want to get into the uh, I'm not speaking on the pay increase or anything like that. I just mean the uh, the attractiveness of doing group six might be lessened now going forward.
I, this is me being an extreme cynic. Maybe I've ju- I'm just extremely jaded from my, you know, seven fucking years when I was on the PD. But do the group, I, I, this is gonna sound so bad, but do the group six people even care, or if they're being robbed, or is that just kind of like the cost of doing business and this, you know what I'm saying? But do the group, I, I, this is gonna sound so bad, but do the group six people even care after being robbed? Or is that just kind of like the cost of doing business in this? You know what I'm saying?
Uh, I mean, they report it every time and they track their vehicles and they try to help us catch who's robbing them.
That's good.
That is, that is good.
From what I understand from, uh, some of the, uh, the nerds, uh, if you lose bags doing group six, you lose your payout.
Goddamn, okay. And I've never tried it.
Understanding.
And then I'm not, again, I'm not trying to throw water on anyone's ideas or anything. I just, I'm just trying to give a, a, another side to the coin. Cuz I do know that I did hear for a while that it, you know, people were sort of all gravitating towards that cuz of the pay, but as everyone figured out that, uh, that was paying more than anything else, so did the people who don't actually wanna work the job and just want the money.
It, it's actually uncanny how fast people will like learn shit, though.
What are we talking about? This, uh, I stoned out for a second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with, you know, fucking just, uh, I'm good with just patting little Timmy on the head, but, you know, uh, I'm just cautioning that, uh, perception will always drive commentary, uh, and I think it is our responsibility, yes, to sometimes placate and appease, uh, but also recognize that that is what we're doing.
Okay. That's understandable. I mean, honestly, yeah, it has.
For now.
Yeah.
Welcome back, Mr. Kent. Thank you.
I, I completely agree, you know, and like.
Yeah, no, I, I do.
Kit for the lawyers would be right now, just peg their pay to the cops, which I, I think would be a hundred fifty dollar increase to seven hundred an hour.
Oh.
And then, then the DOJ and PD can say like, look, at least we acknowledge we're, we're in this together, you know, while we work on a solution. You know, no, no one government faction between those two at least is like better than the other.
But then you have PD and EMS who have to pay for vehicle repairs and gas, um, you know, uh, like.
Ooh, hell, let's hit them with that shit, Etta.
Went out, reimbursed those?
Uh, no. I, I did for the first, uh, for the first month because everything was so rough, um, as we were all getting on our feet and getting settled. But there have been no more reimbursements issued, no.
Really? I was not made aware of that.
Has, has its pros and cons. Like PD, they're, they're gonna have more vehicle repairs by the nature of the business, but they could offset their.
It's gonna also find people.
Yes, they can.
Lawyers can also, you know, get contract money. We just made it so only lawyers can sign contracts.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
You know, doctors, they're, they're tied to one area, like.
Yeah, they're kinda stuck. We can't accept tips, but no one tips us.
Yeah, like EMS is the only one that doesn't, can't really like mitigate. So.
What are EMS making?
What are, yeah, what are EMS making comparison? We can discuss all of them.
Um, so they, they make, uh, the same as PD.
Seven hundred?
Yep.
Yep.
It's not bad.
I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to bump that considering they have a lot to pay for.
Dakota, how much money you got in your account?
I went and got my paycheck right now, probably well over a hundred K.
Holy fuck, where'd you get that? Oh, my god.
To be fair, I work more than the typical cop does.
Yeah, I know Corn, Cornwood, Cornwood told me that he dropped a hundred and fifty thousand or yeah, something.
Hundred thirty K.
Stuff for the PD testing cars or something.
Bank, holy shit.
Yeah, but they're not, but they're not getting banked is what I'm saying is they're just putting in hours.
Yeah, they're putting fifteen to seventeen hours in.
That was my argument with Pixie, you know, like it's, that's what she's been doing.
And again, there will always be outliers, right? Like there will always be somebody who, you know, fucking wakes up, you know, in this storm and, you know, wakes up at the group six depot and just fucking takes the truck out and starts trucking, you know? Look, I have no problem. I think that, uh, regardless of what we do, it makes no damn sense for me for doctors who don't have any overhead to be making uh, the same as PD and EMS. So if we are going to say bump doctors to, you know, what, what was the number I threw out? Eight hundred dollars an hour pre, pre-tax, which gets them ten thousand more a month if they're working fifty-six hours a month, which are a week, which you said is, you know, pretty.
To be clear, uh, I, I logged the average of all of the hours for this month. Uh, it's eighteen hours.
Did you, did you log last month?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
While she's doing that, what are judges making now, Crane?
Uh, eight hundred, nine hundred, yeah, nine hundred.
Before tax.
Yeah, and I will, again, I'll, I would wager, I would wager a guess that ninety-five percent of my judges. Ninety-five percent of my judges, uh, well, let's just say most of the time they're playing parcheesi in their apartments until a case comes up.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. The thing is, doctors like, uh, I know you talk about no overhead and everything, but, um, that, they can't go anywhere, right? Like, we are, we're stuck, we're not allowed to do anything else. Um, we're all tracked now. Like, everyone who's there is contributing with everyone who.
Missed what time this meeting actually started.
City like, we do a hell of a lot. I'm not gonna lie. So like, I, I get what you mean. I just want enough to make that feel worth doing, you know?
Been roughly.
It's not an easy job.
Yeah, uh, so, okay, so let's just put some numbers on the table. So doctor, so cops and EMS are currently making seven hundred dollars an hour, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think it's, it's fair that, um, a cop or an EMS makes the same as a base level city council member. Is any, do, do any of y'all feel like you deserve more than a cop or an EMS?
No, that's fair. I, I'd agree to that. Yep.
Okay, so we could do eight hundred an hour for cops and EMS.
Okay.
Uh, doctors, because they have no overhead, call it seven hundred.
Very quiet upon my pay. I don't know it, but I don't wanna change.
How much are doctors making right now? People, hold on, people like whole numbers. How much are they making right now?
Uh, it's seven, six twenty-five.
Okay, so make it seven twenty-five. Say, uh, you got a hundred bucks an hour.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Is someone writing this down?
Well, that, well, that appease, I, I got it all written down. I'll send it to the.
Nice.
Um.
I was gonna say lawyers should be the same as, as PD, but if they're getting a bump, mate, that might be too drastic. I mean, just, I think seven hundred.
What are lawyers at right now, Miss Treasure?
Yeah. It's, that's the.
Five fifty.
Yeah, five fifty.
Okay, so we put lawyers at six fifty, give them a hundred dollars an hour too.
I think it should be seven hundred.
Okay.
I, I agree with seven hundred.
But they don't have repairs and they don't have to pay for their loadout.
Their own thing a lot of the time, whereas, uh, doctors never can when they're on duty.
To be fair, um, a judge's job and a lawyer's job are probably some of the most intense, uh, most acumen required jobs that I can even begin to fathom. I know it may seem easy to people who've done it for a long time, but there are a lot of people who would not stand a chance in a courtroom or preparing a case or doing whatever is required of them. Uh, so while they may not have overhead, I think it's important to recognize that it takes a lot of talent to actually do it well.
Heard five fifty.
I mean.
Or at least, or at least entertainingly.
Well.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree. Hold on, I, I just wanna say something real quick. I, I don't disagree. Um, and I'm gonna beat a dead horse here, but, uh, I have always held the position that it is perfectly reasonable in our society that some lawyers are public defenders. What I mean by that is they choose to simply respond to requests for cell reps.
These fucking group sex drivers pissin' me off.
Defense attorneys. And they, you know, don't network, they don't put themselves out there, they're not aggressive with demanding retainers or contract fees or anything. And there are some attorneys, uh, and there have been numerous that I can cite to who are aggressive in demanding contract fees and they all came from the same place, right? They all started off as public defenders. And as they build their reputation for that skill set, which you're talking about, Mr. Thoroughbred, they can command fees that are, uh, I would say much higher than any other profession ever could of government worker. So I think that there is an opportunity there that's reflected in having a low base salary for a public defender.
I think at seven hundred, they're still the, the lowest out of everyone in the government, but it, it, both the lowest paid jobs.
But how, Molten, how much, how much would you need to make up that gap in full-time work in extracurricular work as an attorney?
As you said before, Crane, it, it is about perception in a lot of cases. And if I hear as a lawyer that my paycheck starts with a six, whereas literally everyone else in this goddamn bureaucracy starts with a seven or more, that makes me feel beyond a shitty.
Okay, as long as we recognize that it's based in perception and not reality.
And that's a, my counterpoint also was that, you know, police are expected to do their job and act as prosecutors as well. So.
But they, they have the, they have, they.
Why police get, should be getting paid and, and other than, than money, okay? Like, look, police, uh, they, they, they need to have a life too. They, they get my bill. Let's also, uh, talk about, I'll talk about, sorry, let's talk about that police is the most desirable job in our government bureaucracy as well. And, and I think that should factor into their pay a little bit, if I could be completely blunt.
I think that's reasonable too. I'm not gonna lie. It's, it's, it's tough to be stuck at the hospital when they can go out and explore wherever the hell they want and do whatever.
Are you saying they should be paid less, Molten?
Yeah, were you saying that, Molten?
I, I'm saying.
What's clerk make? I have no idea.
Well, no, I'm just saying, like.
Yeah.
I keep track because I'm satisfied with my pay and I like my job.
More. I'm just saying that, you know, that may be why they're set the way that they are set.
Yeah. Well, the, the police, the police have the opportunity and ability to hire a lawyer for them, right?
Correct. And there is no district attorney's office and there will not be.
Yep.
So they don't, they don't necessarily have to represent themselves. They just can or have to if no one else can, right?
I'm, I'm gonna give a, a, a very blunt counterpoint to that and, uh, I, ma- maybe I, I'm, I'm working off inaccurate information, but they don't have the money to hire an, an attorney. That, that, that is.
Well, there's a weird contradiction here because all I hear from attorneys is that there's no one willing to pay them. And then I hear from PD that they want to hire attorneys.
Maybe it's the rate that, that people are trying to get hired at, that there's a, a breakdown in communication on, but re- regardless, um, my gripes will, will be settled i- if lawyers make seven hundred an hour. Uh, I think that, that, that's fine for cops as well, but I, you know, that's, uh, that, that's just my personal opinion.
Um, with, with the full understanding that my wife is an attorney, uh, I agree. I've seen the amount of work that goes into doing that job and I think they are deserving of that fat seven at the beginning. Um.
Yeah, I don't, I don't got an issue with it. I just, you know.
Uh, I, I, uh, let's put this one to a vote since it seems contentious.
What are the final numbers we're voting on?
Well, let's vote on the, uh, the lawyer specific ones since it's fresh in our mind right now and then we can go through the other ones. Um, so seven hundred for lawyers before tax. Uh, any not in favor, please raise your hand. Affirmative, unanimous. Good, excellent.
Crane, you're in charge of hiring lawyers and whatnot, right?
Hmm.
Yep.
All right. Then I don't have an issue.
Um, sick. Uh, what were the other numbers again?
So lawyers have been bumped up to seven hundred, doctors are at seven twenty-five, uh, EMS and PD have been bumped up to eight.
You get a hundred, you get a hundred, you get a hundred.
And now nobody, nobody makes anything that starts with a six. So.
There you go. Yeah.
Perfect.
The thing, the, the thing, the thing that pisses me off, uh, about all, uh, the, the discrepancy in pay, uh, between, you know, government jobs, whatever, and people who are running G six or grime or whatever, um, yeah, they, they can choose to do that. And yeah, maybe they, they will get the boot um, eventually from being able to work ninety hours at their fucking job, right? Uh, that said, uh, who gives the boot on the, the houses that they were able to buy, the cars that they were able to buy? And all of these things are in limited stock, right? And we've got people who are working necessary and important jobs that are, are going to miss out on, on the opportunity to get these limited stock things because we have no method of actually, you know, reclaiming that stuff.
Hold on, that's not true. Does he wait?
You're gonna reclaim shit? Hell, yeah. Okay.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, I, listen, I'm just gonna tell you right now. Uh, I know you hate hearing about the past, but look, here's how it goes, okay? People get lots of money, they get race cars and nice houses, and then they get bored. And they start robbing banks and dealing drugs, and then they get caught robbing banks and dealing drugs. And then I seize their cars and their houses and then they go back on the market. And/or, and/or, these people then can't afford their asset feeds and then they get repossessed. So I would not stress too much about a limited economy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, I know that we touched on it briefly on the first meeting, um, but was limiting the amount of homes that you can purchase going to ever be a thing that we wanna do, given the limited real estate that we have available to us currently?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
They'll just get other people to buy it, but I think we should still limit it cuz they, we should force them to do that. Like, if they're gonna, they should try if they want to. They will have a bunch of property.
Yeah, it should, yeah, they should actually.
Isn't there?
Yeah.
I know there was a limit in the past. Is there not anymore?
No, there's not.
Okay, well, maybe we should legislate that.
Okay.
Well, and I, and I, and I would suggest, well, uh, I would suggest that the way we could limit that without putting a hard limit on it would be to, you know, uh, tax them.
They like introduce a new tax?
No, like not leave it at four percent.
Oh, well, that's not changing.
Okay. Hard limit it is.
Do we compound it based on how many properties you own?
I would be, that, that's something I would be interested in.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if we can do that. We can ask.
Yeah, it, yeah, it probably is not.
I will tell you that if we ask to do that, it will be something that will only go into place probably a month or two from now.
Yeah.
And I, I was, that was literally just off the top of my head. I, that's not something that I had like planned, basically.
So for now, we can introduce a hard limit and then we can revisit, uh, the compounding interest uh, at a later date if it's feasible. Does that sound like something that we could?
Okay, so what are we proposing? Houses? What's the hard limit?
Uh, I mean, I don't know how many.
Pre-residentials per entity was what I was thinking the first week, but.
Three? Yeah, I mean, like I said, the, the old limit was two, um, you know, and then.
Hmm.
Is there anyone who, that we know off the top of our head that owns more than three houses?
Mr. Key, Mr. K.
Oh, Mr. K, yeah.
Yeah, he owns four.
Well, he can wait and make it a business, you know, and then go that way. As an individual, I don't see why you should have more than like two houses.
Well, he's got a felony. He ain't running a business.
Yeah, no, I love him.
All right. Well, I mean, if we're saying three, what do we, is, uh, are, are we grandfathering in the individual? Yeah, I think that would be the only feasible way to do it.
Force someone to sell their shit, but I think three is a law.
Yes, you can. It's called eminent domain.
I guess we could. I think three is a, I, I'll be honest, I think one person shouldn't need to own more than one house. Uh, if their spouse wants to get another house, if their best friend wants to get another house, that's fine. Why should one person have to own more than one?
Yeah.
Listen, I'm not a big fan of eminent domain, so I ain't trying to go retroactively and seize people's shit after they're already on it.
Trying to either, but I think, uh, if we can limit it in the.
There needs to be a brokey mindset.
I'm okay with that.
So what is comfortable for everybody?
I'm good with three if everyone else is. I wanted to say two, but.
I would say two.
I'd say two. I think, uh,
I think two was already pushing it. I thought, yeah, okay. If two is what the wind's blowing, then yeah, two's fine by me.
Should this be classified by neighborhood or is it just period?
My bad.
Yeah.
My, my, my fucking bad.
Or slash entity.
God damn it. It's not like you didn't see it in fucking Garrett's stream.
What do you think, Max?
Uh, I'm not for a cap on this.
You're not for a cap or up for a cap?
Not for a cap.
State your reasoning.
Uh, I'm a capitalist, that's why.
Well, hold on. You're a capitalist? What does that have to do with owning a cap on homes?
Well, I mean, who, 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 who puts caps on the amount of food that people are allowed to eat from their government? It's communist shit, man. Uh, trying to, to limit this, it's like we're basically giving them permission to do, uh, we're stifling potential business for people who are interested in doing real estate stuff, one. Uh, two, I just don't, I don't like the idea of putting a limit on that, on that. When only one person who I know has a lot of fucking contacts and connects, uh, probably went through a monumental amount of effort to actually acquire those four houses that the normal. That the normal, the average person probably would not be willing to do, the the average person would not be able to do. Uh, I would be surprised if there was a person out there right now on the street. Uh, who isn't working with some sort of gang or group that was able to afford more than one house. Because everyone I've talked to has said, hey, you know, I live here with eleven people, you know what I'm saying? Literally eleven people. Stuffed into a fucking house. I I don't, I don't think this is as pressing as it may otherwise seem.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't think there's a. What's the right word? I don't think there's a, uh, risk of things going.
I think Eda might have like the first sieve house, like actual sieve house.
Look, and I think also if, you know, we get to a point where. There is a scarcity issue in which we feel like it's a problem. We can always legislate that problem, but. Uh, I I'm inclined to agree with Max in some ways that I. I don't think that we're, I I don't know whose interest we're serving. Let me put it that way. I don't know whose interest we're serving, whether it be public or private. That would countermand the opportunity for people to make money.
That's right.
That being said.
For the twenty-five months, I'm sorry I missed that.
You know, we do have an elephant in the room, which is, uh. Said person who runs the business that we're talking about right now, uh, does have a felony and. Uh, continues to operate a contract-based business, which is an interesting concept. So that should be something, uh, I guess that'll come to my doorstep. Uh, I have something to bring up if we want to move on.
Yeah, we can just, we can table the cap then for now, since it's not an issue. And if it does, if a scarcity does become an issue, then we can revisit it.
Yeah.
I agree with that. If scarcity truly does become an issue, like Crane said, he doesn't really see it happening. Uh, and I, I don't have any experience in the matter because, look, when this city was thriving, I was in prison, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I've, the only time when scarcity became a problem is when we were on the brink of collapse and the economy was outrageous. And we had nine hundred million dollars in the state account. And I can also tell you that part of my role, uh, was foreclosing on homes. That had not paid their asset fees, uh, for more than four iterations was the limit I set.
What, what is, what is an iteration?
Well, that's what I'm getting to. At that point, an iteration of asset fees were every two weeks. And so what I was giving people was two and a half months, actual two and a half months. Uh, to show that they were interested in maintaining their properties by paying their asset fee. Uh, and I will tell you that I went through the process of foreclosing, I would say once every month or so. And each time I did so, um. I would say I foreclosed on something like thirty properties. Uh, so I would suggest that if and if and when we do reach a point where there is a problem of scarcity. I think turnover and, uh, court-based foreclosures combined. More than easily make up for those issues. Now, does that mean that you can buy the exact perfect dream house that you've always wanted? No, there will be people who will be first actors and movers who will secure properties and may never let them go. That's just fucking life. Um, but will you be able to buy a house in a neighborhood that you choose? Should you pay attention to the market? And check for foreclosures on a regular basis? Uh, yes, very much so. That's, that's my experience.
Are, uh. Hold on. Are felons able to work G six?
Uh, they should not be if they are, then.
Yes.
Okay, well, then we should, we should talk about that and we should make a policy about it.
Let's do it.
There is, there is no reason why anyone should be entitled to work a high-paying. What amounts to a private security contracting job for financial institutions of this city when they are felonies. That makes.
So we have a, we have an individual who stabbed one of our doctors in the hospital and has been prosecuted for it. I'm work group six every day.
That's actually absurd.
Trespassed from the hospital and.
Okay, so I propose, I propose a piece of legislation that states. That felons are not eligible to work private security, uh, jobs dealing with city finances.
Okay, can I ask how we plan on enforcing that unless we walk to G six?
I'm gonna talk to the guy at G six and tell him not to allow them to work there anymore.
All right, excellent. Well, I love that idea.
I don't care. I don't care if you want to go drive a fucking delivery truck. All day long, up and down the highways, if you're a felon, hell, trucking has been employing felons since the dawn of time, fuck it. But, you know, in terms of this group six shit, I it don't make no goddamn sense to me that you're walking around in a security uniform with a vest and a. Fucking private security company badge delivering pallets of cash to the city vault, and you're a goddamn felon. That's stupid.
Agreed, agreed. I feel like this isn't even a matter of us having to write something up. Uh, well, we'll let, uh, Alan.
Just talk to the guy group six.
Yeah, that started, yeah.
I, I wasn't really, I wasn't the impression that these, these, uh, these bosses at these places would automatically turn, uh, people who, yeah.
You would think that if you get, if you, uh, there was a time where if you get pulled over and you even got a ticket, they would get upset with you, but that doesn't seem to be the case. The, the example that you used, uh, Kendra, he had a felony and nothing happened from it. Nothing. He didn't, he didn't, he didn't even get a slap on the wrist.
Really? Holy shit. I think he was still working because I've seen him come in in a uniform, but.
Wait, who's Kendra?
Oh, I think he meant cancer.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I've.
It's not late for you this time. You don't have.
It's been an hour, Crane.
Uh, okay, I will reach out to the folks at group six, um. So I have something to.
Let, let, let's clarify, um, violent, violent felonies, right?
So that, that is one thing. We don't fire automatically for all felonies at the hospital.
Listen, if you're, if you're, if you're convicted of. I I I'm not going to go through the list. There's a number of nonviolent felonies that I would suggest would bar you from.
What's one? Because I'm drawing a blank right now. I'm just genuinely.
Criminal possession of a government-issued firearm, fraud, extortion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, all felonies then.
All felonies, yep.
And hey, and and I've, and Siobhan can vouch for this. I've been advising people since day one that work for me as attorneys. Uh, that we should be fighting for our clients to make plea deals with police, to not get felonies, because that should matter. And I think, uh, you know, if people, uh, are willy-nilly and don't care about getting felonies, then that should. Classify them as a criminal.
Yep.
Yeah, this is just, this isn't just G six, it's like. Any government paid job? Or is it specifically?
No, I think G six because you're dealing specifically. I don't even care about grime. I think it's just group six because you're talking about the transport of city funds to financial institutions. And you're talking about being trusted with that, and yet you're running around with like murder convictions and fucking.
Yeah.
Reckless evading and extortion and all other types of felonies.
Literally trespassed from the hospital, uh, and is being trusted to, uh, to do all that, so, yeah.
Oh, the news, the news, the new slogan of grime is gonna be every crime going grime.
Like, look, like I said, if they want to sit there and drive a truck all day, then, uh, you know. That seems to me more palatable in terms of what a felon could do for work.
No, I get your point, and I agree.
So is anyone, anyone have any further discussion on that?
Nope, I think we're all in agreement on that.
I agree. I think that that will help at least because.
That will help alleviate.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, I will, uh, I will talk to that. And, you know, the, I I'm gonna talk to the group six people and maybe we come to some kind of. Understanding of like certain charges that bar you. I'm not sure if we're even possible to do that. Well, I've figured it out. Because there could be some felonies that maybe we don't want to draw the line on. I don't know. I will start at what we concluded, which is any felony, and I'll report back before making any implementations if there are. Uh, possibilities to split hair.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I will do that. Uh, something I want to bring up. Um, I've had a talk with Captain Slacks today about a couple of issues. Um, and this has come up several times organically to me through different venues. Uh, labor law, uh, we don't have any right now. And I would like to poll the council on what kind of society we want to be. Uh, what I mean by that is, is that, uh, are we an at-will employment, uh, state? Are we going to codify, you know, certain labor laws? How complex do we want to be? Uh, my initial suggestion, uh, and maybe this is somewhat, uh. Well, I'll just say that it is in some way self-serving because I currently deal with hiring and firing a lot of people. Thankfully, I haven't had to fire anyone yet. Murphy Braun isn't definitely suspended, but that's about it. Um. I would suggest that, um, at least for government jobs, and maybe we make a proclamation or a piece of legislation dealing with only government or all jobs. I don't know, uh, but I would suggest that at-will employment makes the most sense because. As Mr. Thoroughbred over there said, uh, I believe in capitalism. And I think that, you know, in a fledgling economy, uh, I think we're putting the cart before the horse if we start defining a whole host of labor regulations. Now, that being said, uh, in response to an at-will state. If, you know, employees of certain government entities want to unionize or make demands or whatever. Or threaten striking, then that's a natural consequence and evolution. Uh, but I think to begin with, we should codify something, and if we're gonna codify something, I would propose at-will employment. So I'd open the floor discussion.
When you say at-will, you just mean literally no limits.
Uh, I mean, you are employed in a contract whereby you can quit at any time and you can be fired at any time.
Uh, and what would you call the system now?
Uh, that is the system right now. I'm just codifying it. For example, for example, I will, I will explain the, the, the impetus for this. I was approached by Ramil Rahman, one of the attorneys, uh, regarding a situation with a police officer who was recently terminated. Uh, that police officer, uh, is accused of. Some form of malfeasance, uh, some couple of different things. It's, it's, it's largely irrelevant, but. For the sake of color and context, uh, accused of essentially assaulting a civilian. Uh, sustaining multiple complaints regarding use of force and professionalism. And then on top of that, uh, lying to superiors or, uh, some form of obfuscating, omitting whatever language we want to use. Because that's in contention, to be fair. Um, and thus, as a result, not of the actions of the assaulting or the use of force. But rather the, uh, obfuscation and the omission, uh, the person was removed, removed from PD. Uh, now, in consultation with Slacks, because Rami asked me to look into the matter. I, you know, told Slacks, I I have the ability to look over all your, you know, internal documents or records. I'm not gonna do so. But I like to hear from you, you know, first off, what are your SOPs? What are your policies? What are people told when they're hired? What's in the documentation? Do you have anything formally? And according to him, there is a formal declaration in their documentation when people are hired that states that they are an at-will employee. They can be terminated, uh, for any reason at any time by the chain of command of the PD. Um. Uh, you know, I don't necessarily, I didn't at least think that needed to be codified when we first wrote the constitution and everything, but apparently it does. So I would suggest that we should at least codify that we are an at-will state. And thus, we don't, uh, open a bunch of argumentation about labor laws and et cetera, et cetera.
I agree.
Access removed.
Fine with like the, the status quo for the most part. The, the only exception I would like to see to maybe. Signal to the populace as, as a whole that we are okay with this sort of thing is we're an at-will state. Uh, but the only exception is, uh, you cannot be fired for attempting to form a, a union. And that'll also, that'll also signal if people read the legislation closely that we are okay with, uh, these kind of things popping up.
Sure, follow me.
Would we so also, please tell me if this is a can of worms and we don't even want to open it unless you. Maybe like negotiate a private contract with a private entity that hires you?
Yeah, no, okay, the, the freedom, we don't even need to say that. The freedom to contract always supersedes base policy.
Okay.
Two individuals, as long as it is not, you know, fucking. Uh, you know, against the pure social interest, as long as it's not agreeing to murder someone or. Commit some other crime that infringes on someone else's rights, two individuals have the freedom to contract. That's how it's, it's gonna be. Hell, we have mutual combat. That's essentially a contract.
No, I, I just like saying it out loud just so I can hear someone confirm it, so.
Yep, yep. I mean, so basically, we codify, we are an at-will state. Um, uh, the only limitation is that you may not be fired for attempting to organize a labor union.
And I like that, yeah.
Uh, and I, I guess on, on that note, uh, I, I, I don't know if this is just legalese, but if you are fired, the. You do have to be given a reason. It can't just be like, well, we're an at-will state, you know, it, it. Like, you may not like the reason, but they have to give you a reason so you, that, that you know it's not because you're.
Yeah, you, you at-will means you may be fired for any reason.
Look, okay, except for the, I'm saying they have to give a reason when they fire. Uh, it doesn't have to be a good one, but they, they have to give a reason.
Well, yeah, any reason is not.
Debated skipping this meeting chat.
Oh, I, I actually was meant to bring this up. This would have tied in earlier. Congratulations, everyone. We officially fired our first doctor for getting a felony. Uh, it was no one you would expect. Uh, it was Pascal Dubois.
Never met him.
Uh, you, yeah, no one would have guessed him in the slightest. Uh, he, uh, hit a cop head-on, uh, then tried to run, so got. You know, chased, uh, got arrested for hit and run at that point. Uh, in which they searched his vehicle and found a hundred times the legal amount of, uh, weed. Uh, or not the legal amount, the felony amount in his.
Oh, my god.
As well as all of the steps for cultivation. So, uh, he pled guilty to those charges, uh, and has been, uh, swiftly fired.
Very nice.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah, so, it, I, it's, it's happening. Uh, people just gotta start committing these crimes.
Perfect.
I really didn't fucking want to do it.
Until getting the expungement.
It's like, man.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's capital as a baby.
Well, no, they were, correction, they were. You weren't grime until you get expelled. No more G six. Um, yeah, any objections that will?
None at all, no.
None.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, we wouldn't have fired anyone for those union stuff, even if they were all being very dumb.
Michael, any thoughts, anything?
No, no.
I had pizza rolls for breakfast.
Um, second thing I had to bring to the council. Uh, Slacks has approached me about the, uh, current lack of organized structure. Uh, at Bolinbrook. He would like to draw on state funds to begin staffing the prison.
Nope.
You don't want to hire anyone to work the prison.
I mean, they got, they got guards down there, don't they?
No.
No, they don't.
None, none at all? There's not a single person with a gun down there?
Guards, but no, yeah.
Mister, Mister Dab, they get sent to prison, they run into the tower and jump out and nobody stops them. Right now, that's how, uh, they just run off.
He has, he has, he has, he has explained to me, as Mr. Simone pointed out, that as of right now. Uh, there is nothing preventing anyone from either breaking into or out of prison. Don't ask me why people would want to break into prison, but sometimes they do. So, um, his suggestion. Yeah, I don't, I don't even want to go there. I think we all know. Um, so his suggestion or his request. Uh, which I find to be rather meager and surprising in its humility. Was to hire a total of five DOC employees to start. He would like to hire a warden, a deputy warden, and three employees. Um, now, when I asked him, what are these guys gonna do? Because if we give them guns, they're just gonna get robbed and beaten up every day by six criminals. Versus five guards.
Right.
Uh, and his statement was they will not have guns. They will only have, uh, less lethal baton. And I said, okay, and what's to stop people from, uh, just breaking in and out and, you know, using them as punching bag? Uh, and he suggested we hire local guards with guns who are placed in the towers.
Oh, boy.
I guess.
With, with good old Slacks, uh, isn't the PD?
It's actually stupid that that shit is a thing.
Anyway, I mean, the cook can probably even wrong like. Are you saying we should go up there? Uh, what I'm saying is why, why is Slacks proposing to hire people who are, uh, I don't want to say subordinate, that's the term more like, is it a DOC? Is gonna be subordinate?
Well, hold on, that's the other part of my proposition of the council. Is that in the past, the DOC was the purview of the police. Uh, I don't think that makes sense. Um, the question is, is if there was a DOC, who would oversee them? And, uh, what, you know, sort of structure would we like to create? So these are all, these are all open-form questions. I don't, I don't have good suggestions. I'm just telling you. That as of right now, the prison is basically a gaping hole of lack of oversight and control. Um, and do we want to do anything about that?
Yes.
I, I, I wanna say yes, but I, I think hiring personnel is, is a, some of the last things we, we do.
Yeah, we'd have to iron out all of the details before we rush to hiring people to throw in there.
Why don't we just have cops go down there and do it?
That's, that's what the current system is, I believe.
Sick. Uh, I think Slacks should take care of his hiring problem before he looks at something like this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I. I, I have some thoughts on, uh, prison. I'm, I'm sure everyone else here does. Why, why don't we, you know, we have our MDT. Why don't we put what we feel should be the, uh, I won't call it the structure, but just like, well, we think the TLDR prison should be. You know, in, in our MDTs under our own sections and we could, you know, come together and discuss it next week, just in terms of, uh, you know, the. The laws that apply there, how it may operate, who runs it, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Like, that's my proposal. We table it. We each come up with our own ideas in the MDT and then we bring them together next week and work them out.
Uh, sure. I don't know that much about the prison. I'll be honest. I've never been, so I'll try to just make it up. I do know that they have, uh, no medical staff up there, including, uh, local medical staff, which has been a. Been a weird issue for us. Um, so maybe, uh, having staff up there might help that at least.
You know what we could do?
What's that?
Jailbreak charge.
Already have it, I believe.
Yeah, that exists.
We, we should have that, yeah.
What's it called? I just looked it up.
Escaping custody or?
Uh, prison break would be the ones where you're already done with processing. And then when you're prior to processing, it's escaping custody.
But then you would need people to actually be up there to witness it, to enforce it, right?
Yeah.
That's true.
So, why don't, why don't we up the fine?
Well, I, I guess I'm referring to Etta's comment of, how do you, how do you catch anyone if there's no one working there?
Didn't someone just say the cops go down there to handle this shit?
No, no, no. Cops go down there to handle like, people who get knocked out by running into the electrical fence and can't get picked up on their feet. Cause there's no medical staff.
Okay, well, uh, you know, maybe get one of your cops to go down there with a camera. They kept someone doing it.
Uh, the only thing I'll say to that is we barely have enough units to police the city as is at the current moment.
Then you should suggest to your captain that maybe he is sorts, uh, sorts that out first.
Uh, I would suggest that I don't think, uh, the qualifications for a police officer are the same as being a prison guard. Especially if they're not entitled to have a weapon.
I think they're pretty damn close.
Uh, look. It is what it is. It is what it is.
Wait, so are we holding the position that we don't want DOC then? Is that what I'm hearing? We just want?
I, I think that every, I think we should chew on it and discuss it next week.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not shutting it down. We gotta do something, right?
But in the interim, uh, it's still Slacks' problem, uh.
Yeah, until we have details.
No, no offense to the begrudging police force, but they, they could go up there a- as needed to handle it. Uh, but I, I am also fine with it being a Lord of the Flies, uh, in the meantime as well.
I, 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 I will be for a DOC if it ever gets to the point where someone that I know is a criminal walks up to me and is whining. About the cops being too in force for them. That's the point at which that I'm sure that they're probably going to need a DOC proper.
What do you mean?
Meaning if I'm in, if I'm in city hall and I'm sitting there and I don't know, Mr. K walks up to me, he's like, hey. Uh, how am I supposed to make my living on these motherfucking streets? Cause the police force is arresting me every single time I try to do something. Um, at that point, uh, the prisons will probably be full enough to actually require DOC. But right now it sounds like someone is trying to weasel their way into a position that does not necessarily need to exist.
I'm gonna be ask a very cynical question to you, Unicoda. Um, is the average prison population above one right now?
I would have to look. I don't know what the average prison.
I've looked in the newspaper a few times and there's not that many people being sent up there.
Does that number break one?
So that's a good point. Then they're just standing around with nothing to do if we hire people.
Yeah. So what about, what about local guards?
Yeah, for now.
I'm, I'm, I'm for that. Fuck it.
My, my ideal vision of, of, my ideal vision of the prison. For sure.
My ideal vision of the prison is no DOC, local guards only. That's what I like.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, so what I'm, what I'm pointing at is, the reason why I just opened up for general discussion is I'm not suggesting that. Uh, I agree with Slacks. I'm just saying that I think we need something. And if local guards are palatable to everyone, then I think that's something we should look into.
Are we gonna have to pay them?
That's fine with me.
No, they are subhumans.
Excellent.
Yeah.
They literally eat garbage.
In regards to the medical staff up there, I, I mentioned that in regards to DOC. That's, that's a function DOC used to have, um. Frankly, uh, prisoners are gonna have to get over the fact that, uh, they're not up there. Uh, we ran into an issue where a patient refused transport down to the hospital and also refused to speak with local doctors. Of the hospital or up at the prison, um, and requested that a doctor be transported to the prison for. Uh, we're just not gonna fuck around with that. The, they've got to deal with what they've got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree.
You're in prison, so I'm sorry. You, uh, you get transported or.
Or you do what's there. Electrified fence, how about that?
Yeah, honestly.
Don't, don't sit there and punch each other until you've knocked yourself unconscious.
You shouldn't get to, uh, refuse transport and just have, you know, everything brought to you.
Exactly.
People are just gonna have to deal with, uh, sorry, you're in prison.
I agree.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
That's how I feel about mountain rescue.
Uh, we good on this one?
Okay, yeah.
Hey, if you're gonna climb the fucking top of a mountain and walk on a sixty degree slope with a hunting rifle and. Slip and fall in your goddamn socks and slides, then maybe you should die.
Oh, well, natural selection.
I, uh, I, I think we're good for now. The last thing I'll say is I, I just created a, a city council document called Prison Thoughts. I mean, if people just want to like carve out their own section, basically, and put what they want in there over, over the next week.
Thank you for that.
We could just review it next week.
Um, does anyone else have anything they'd like to present?
Yeah, I have a bunch.
Uh, I've got, oh.
You do? You guys want to take a little, a little, wee little five minute break perhaps?
Yeah, probably.
Sounds good.
All right. What's up?
Take a quick. Etta, Etta, can you send me that list of the thingies?
Yep, sure can.
Cool.
And was there anything else I needed to do? What else do we agree on?
It's just been discussions. Uh, it was the get group six to ban people felonies. Uh, and then the pay raises. I don't think we've actually gone for anything else.
Group six, pay at will, except for union.
Oh, the at will.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm gonna make that right now.
And, uh, DOC, we're kicking back to PD for now.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna go tell Slacks, you know. It is what it is.
Hell, yeah. That's not a necessary reaction.
Lance, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I won't argue with you anymore. I'm sorry. Oh my god.
Oh, god.
Anyone else having issues with pulling up their MDT on that note?
There's a lot of issues.
It'll just take a second. Just give it a sec.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I'm having a little bit of.
Can't even eat my chips, man.
Slow of throwing out these chips. I can eat them. It just took me a hot second to grab.
Yeah, that's, I just had to think about it extra long before I actually moved.
This bag ain't going in my hands, huh? Bitch, please. Don't want to pass out.
Sorry, yeah. Oh, hopefully, yeah, hopefully the bag is still.
I'm not bleeding, so it should be fine.
Uh, just so everyone knows, um. Wait, is the door wide open for you guys right now?
Uh, no.
No.
Ooh, weird.
It is, I just walked in. That might, that might've been me. Alright.
Um, be careful about moving around right now. Uh, the rapture is upon us.
Oh, Jesus.
Stay inside. Yeah.
I'm closing my eyes. Uh, i- i- it's been a pleasure knowing all of you if the world sunders into two.
I'll save them. It seems like we're good.
Huh, it's gonna be a long one. Spent a long time in prison.
Uh, Los Santos labor law, Los Santos hereby adopts the standard of at will employment defined better unless privately contracted to otherwise. Employees may be terminated or quit for any reason. The only exception to this stated policy is that an employee may not be fired for attempting to organize a labor union.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
I mean, do, do you think you need to add like part of?
Yo, Chat, how many episodes of Solo Leveling at now?
Organize, run or be a part of a labor union?
Oh, yeah, just expand on it.
Six word. What about, uh, Dungeon Mushy?
Yeah, I mean, I write it in, but I'm just gonna tell you what, uh.
For for dub, I'm not watching the dub.
It's hard to prove.
Uh, that's fine. I was, I'm not, I'm not worried about the legality. I, I just like the, the signal to the streets that like, hey, like this is something. We're, we're okay. Even if you feel you're getting infringed on, well, there, there you go.
Dodging the anime, don't want to be let down. I mean, the first episode seemed done. And some of the trailer seemed pretty sick. Uh. I don't know. I usually those man, uh, ad- uh, adaptations are visually pretty well. I think the only one people had like problems with was, uh. Got a high school.
Uh, I read out the legislation.
But even then, the, the animation and that was fucking insane.
At will employment. I just published it if you want to look at the language.
Fuck, yeah.
In, uh, in reports?
In legislation, yep.
Oh, uh, we still need mask mandate from last week as well, Karine.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If we make that one's more severe, I'm getting fucking pilled it.
You, you want to be more than the, just the state run place?
Yes.
Like, what, what, what are you propos-? Well, I mean, we're not officially back yet, but what are you proposing?
I, I don't know. I need to think about it.
You not see Michael?
Michael.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm glad it's not just me. I cannot see him.
Like twenty-four seven.
Oh my god.
Remember what the mayor said, don't move too much.
Yeah.
He was cautioning about the rapture.
Upon us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we go, yeah, I'm staying, I'm staying right here. I'm good.
He was saying the rapture is upon us and be careful about how much you move around because you may not find yourself coming back.
Yep.
May get sucked into the void.
I just took a nap in the lobby. I'm fine.
Well, I can't.
I can see him.
You're literally a disembodied voice in my ear. Yeah, I just heard your voice and was like, where the fuck are you?
I can't hear him either. Oh.
Well.
I need to go.
No, that will cause more issues.
Yeah, just stay still. You're fine.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, what's that?
I don't fucking see anything. Yeah, server scuffed, scuffed right now.
Oh, this is a good one.
What, uh? What do you mean? We good now?
Oh, I hit Mr. K with, uh, one of my favorites.
No, I still cannot see you.
I'll twat it out.
Okay. Dakota say something? I'm talking right now. I'm a motherfucker.
That's good. I like that.
Perfect timing for all this, huh? Nice.
Hmm. Looks like the only thing that didn't get brought up. Was Max's incest act. And then from last week. Hmm.
I can hear him coming in and out, but I don't see him.
Same. Yeah, it, it looks like the only things that haven't been brought up from previous meetings were Max's. Uh, incest act that he wanted to propose from the first meeting. Hmm, and then the mask mandate. Hmm.
Uh, hey, Chief Justice, you know how you were talking about, uh, asset seizure earlier?
Yeah.
Can I give you the name of a potential, uh, law that I would like to propose and you can tell me whether or not it's feasible in the immediate?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I named this the, uh, Highway Blast Prevention Act. Uh, and it deals with, uh, personally owned vehicles being observed and documented by law enforcement. Used in the commission of a crime within a certain.
We already have a strike system.
Is that in effect right now?
That's why people who get fucking hit with illegal parking get like eleven grand in fines.
Geez, see, this is why I haven't bought a car yet.
Private, privately owned vehicles. Depending on the reason they are impounded for, are allotted a certain number of strikes. Those strikes, uh, scale with the cost of the vehicle. So, uh, when a vehicle, let's say is impounded, a personal vehicle is impounded for requisivating. Uh, that vehicle would then receive, I think it's two strikes. Uh, and those strikes would scale with the cost, like I said, so it, uh, it is already accounted for. Um, the only thing that we have not talked about is, uh, a limit on strikes. I would suggest that that's probably not relevant in this economy, at least thus yet. Uh, because, uh, I don't think people have enough money to afford to pay for thirty strikes on a vehicle.
Very fair, yeah. They kind of limit themselves, but financially with.
Is there a way for me to see how many strikes are on a vehicle? Cause I tried to look and I couldn't find any. Uh, documentation, at least from my end.
Oh, and then Karine, the last thing for you was the adoption of policy amendment.
I already amended the, uh, original document. If you just want a copy, pass that one.
Uh, also, one thing from last week was the suspended licenses at twenty points. I don't know if we actually ever. Wrote that.
Was that something we were gonna write? I thought cops were just gonna like tell people, uh, like, this, this how it be?
Well, let me ask you, Lance, uh, if a cop tells somebody on the street that this is the law and there's no proof of it, are they just gonna believe them?
Yeah.
Are they gonna come to you and file a complaint?
They, they, they could take it to court if they don't believe them.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, I would prefer that we have that hard written down on file.
Smile on your face, Lance.
Okay. Just taking notes.
Max has updated, Karine needs to update legislation.
We're just missing Simone now, right?
Uh, are we?
Uh, I don't know. Can you see him, Dakota?
Uh, it looks like he's standing right next to this potted plant, but I can't really tell.
Okay.
That's where I imagine he is. Oh, I can't see you. I can hear you, but I can't see him.
Nobody can see me, though.
I, I can see you, Simone.
I can't.
I can't hear him anymore either. I could hear him before, now I can't.
He sounds like he's behind the door.
Yeah, I, I don't.
He sounds like he's right behind me, actually.
He is right behind you.
Oh. I, I hear nothing.
He's right behind you.
Are you just going along with him, Malcolm?
Yep, he's definitely right there next to that plant. I see him.
Nine thousand years old, strengthened by moonlight, skeleton made of durasteel can withstand five hundred degrees Celsius without burning, can see in dark, is most powerful during solar eclipse, cannot drown in water, can hibernate at three hundred years at a time. Very cool. What?
Anyone not ready to continue?
I'm good.
Mike, you here?
Other than not seeing or hearing Michael.
I mean, I think we're all gathered. The problem is not everyone can see and hear everyone else.
Yeah. Might need to translate, wait, I heard him.
Being seeable as me right now.
Can you hear me, Mike? Mike, can you hear me?
You're very quiet, speak up a bit. Uh, maybe I can tell where you're, where you're at.
Michael, Michael, Michael.
Simone, can you hear a cancer?
No.
God damn it.
Hmm, but now.
We were almost there.
No? Okay.
God damn.
Hmm.
Tell him to walk in and out real quick.
I think that's what he's been doing.
Simone, if you could, uh, step right outside the door for a second for Max's, uh, request.
I can even hear his feces, but I can't see.
He, he stepped outside, Max.
I still see Max. Thank God for that.
Sorry. Nope.
He stepped back in.
Uh, maybe take a little nap. I don't know.
Can you carry him? I've seen, that works. Lance, can you see him?
Mosley's?
Carry him.
Uh, who, who has got a car?
Not I.
Right, we're in here.
I don't have any.
Uh, all right, everyone in the parking lot.
Okay.
Tell, tell my.
All right, everybody to the parking lot.
All right, we're really moving this thing, huh?
Fuck, yeah. Why not? Field trip, yay! Adventure. This has been a meeting in three places so far. This is pretty exciting.
Yeah, this is a good one.
Mixing it up. Okay, I'm never gonna not.
Laugh, watching him run.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you look like a Janet Jackson backup dancer from Rhythm Nation.
Oh. Not wrong.
I've been resisting the urge to sing Rhythm Nation. Not gonna lie. Uh, no.
Uh-oh.
You're starting through a lot of blood, though.
You're trading blood everywhere. Oh, my god.
To be fair, this was like this when I walked in a while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, tell everyone to wait out front. I'm gonna go see if I can pull my landstalker out, or the landstalker, landstalker out.
Gosh.
Yo, I got a question for y'all.
Somebody just say something?
I cannot see them either, or someone dead.
Yeah, uh.
Oh, motherfucker, I can't hear you.
Oh, fuck. Oh, this is going great. Well, at least me and you both can't see the same people. That's nice.
Yeah, that's.
Solidarity.
Oh, is somebody here?
Yeah, someone was asking us a question. Uh, well, they can't hear us and we can't see them.
Oh.
Yep.
Hi.
Okay, uh, he says wait out front. He's gonna try to get his, uh, his landstalker.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess, uh.
We're, we have to get away from the south side. That's the thing.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay.
Go get it while we're waiting.
Did you do that if you were still a cop?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
W- w- we're not doing anything else right now. Yeah, I'd go, I'd go get, take that thing right now.
Do you think I'm clocked in?
Why wouldn't you be?
Well, I guess as a city council member, right, but.
Yeah, what do I get paid more for? City council or being a cop?
Being a cop, we just voted it in.
Oh, isn't city council still more pay?
Nope, it's a cop now.
Not anymore. Oh, my god, oh, my god, Karine.
It, it, I'm gonna three one one, I'm gonna.
Hey, there you go, that one. Are we trying to report here?
Yeah, where do you even see a vehicle?
I'm trying to figure out what they're talking about and I don't know.
You all don't see a group six vehicle just parked there?
No, no, I don't.
No.
Oh, my god, are you okay, Alex?
I just got hit with.
Are you okay?
Yeah. Uh, this, this is a lot happening right now. I don't see a car at all. I don't see Michael or a van.
Okay, well, you called it a van, so you do see it and you're fucking with me. You said group six van.
You said group six van.
I said vehicle.
Okay, well, we, we call those vans. I don't really know.
Hey, Alex.
These late hours are making me more cranky.
Hey, I can't see you.
Paranoid.
Hello.
There's a lot happening right now.
Uh-oh. Is this what happens late at night? Everyone just starts having vision problems and.
I guess so.
I'm not having any problems. What's going on?
Uh, they can't see me, but it's because.
Yeah, most of these is, uh.
If we can't see them, they can't hear us, I think.
Wait, can Michael not hear me?
All right, hold on.
Oh, I guess not. Okay.
I've got the emergency solution. Just wait.
Hmm, yeah, I'm scared. And this is why I bought a house with my fam- Emily and Polino.
Yeah, far away from this.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, uh.
Uh-oh.
What happened?
Look on, look on Twitter, uh, Vince Payne just retweeted it, saying feeling zoned, uh, this photo's crazy. Uh, I think there's a lot more issues than just the south side, it looks like. That's not the south side. That's pretty bad.
That looks like a level from GoldenEye.
Yeah, that is, uh, well, like, I, I think it's meant to be. So I don't know if getting out of the south side is gonna help us.
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Why am I here?